Thank you and welcome to the Monday, June 10th, 2024 Town Council Meeting and Budget Public Hearing. I will start with a roll call. Roll call shows we have Councillor Powers, Councillor Demerit, Councillor Marks, Councillor Bertholz, Councillor Larway, and Councillor Kenny. Councillor Baker is not going to be joining us this evening. Item two on our agenda is Agenda Review. I would just like to let council and the public know that we may have, we'll have a possible amendment to Order Number 24107. That's the Juneteenth Order, and we'll have some language, all some language changes for us when we get to that point in the agenda. Are there any other items for Agenda Review from the council?
Yes.
Councillor Kenny?
I guess this is a request. We'll see, see where it goes, but I would like to remove that from the agenda, that item that you just mentioned. I'm gonna, because I think that belongs under contract negotiations, not, not here. So, I am requesting that we remove that, send, send that to committee.
Okay.
And looking for a second.
So how we handle it, Shelley? Is there a second to moving the June, the Juneteenth Amendment Agenda Item? Order 24107, removing it from today's agenda? Is there a second for that? Hearing none, the request fails. Next item on our agenda, any other Agenda Review items? Hearing none, we'll move on to item three, Approval of Minutes for May 9th, 2024, May 13th, 2024, May 16th, 2024, and May 20th, 2024. It's a lot of minutes. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
There any discussion about the amendments, I mean, the minutes? All those in favor? It's unanimous? Next up, thank you for that. Next up on our agenda is Public Comment. This is an opportunity for people to address the Orno Town Council and the community on any items that are not on our, our schedule. As we publish in our agenda, we have our brief summary of our rules for public comment, and I would only call out for certain for people that pursuant to our public comment rules, both in public comment, in public hearing, we ask and urge and actually forbid anyone from talking specifically about any town, member of the town personnel, town staff directly. People are free to talk about departments and the actions and operations of the town, but we ask that you not name anyone specifically, either in a positive which, or, or a negative way. Pete, you'll let us know if there's any hands raised, right?
I will.
Thank you. Alright, so you can no public comment. We'll move on to public hearing. And I think we're gonna have Pat join us, so you want me to read these off one by one? Okay. We're gonna be together for a bit, I think. The first public hearing is Victualist Licenses for Ameri- the American Legion, Dice Arts Travel Stop, Lead Better's, Orno IGA, The Store Ampersand, and Thai Kitchen. Any members of the public have comment on these matters? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Letter A. And open a public hearing, letter B, to consider a Class 1 Malt Liquor Wine Spirits License, Special Amendment Permit for Music, Dancing and Entertainment, and Victualist License for Sedexo Company, The Bear's Den, Memorial Union, University of Maine. Any questions? Sorry, I didn't ask this last time. Any questions from councillors or? Let's, we'll do comments first and then questions. Comments from the public? Questions from councillors? Okay, we will close the public hearing B. Try and do some of these same start, same minute, end, same minute. Okay? Public Hearing C, to consider a Class 1 Malt Liquor Wine and Spirits License, Special Amusement Permits for Music, Dancing and Entertainment, and Victualist License for Sedexo Company, Wells Catering, University of Maine. Comments from the public? Questions from council? We will close public hearing C. Public Hearing D, to consider a Class 1 Malt Liquor Wine and Spirits License and Victualist License for Chow Enterprises, doing business as China Garden 12 Stillwater Avenue in Orno. Comments from the public? Questions from councillors? We will close public hearing D. We will open public hearing E, to consider a Class 1 Malt Liquor Wine and Spirits License, Special Amusement Permit for Music, Dancing and Entertainment, and Victualist License to Wardwell LLC, doing business as Family Dog 6 Mill Street. Questions from, comments from the public? Questions from councillors? We will close public hearing E. We'll open public hearing F, to consider a Class 11 Malt Liquor Wine and Spirits License, Special Amusement Permit for Music, Dancing, Entertainment, and Victualist Licenses for Marg's Mex Orno LLC, doing business as Margaritas Mexican Restaurant 15 Mill Street. Comments from the public? Questions from the council? We will close public hearing F. And we will open public hearing G, to discuss the 2425 Municipal Capital and Water Pollution Control Facility Budgets. Do we have any, Cornell, do you have anything for us on this, or?
There's been several docs that have been posted on the agenda to show the revisions made since the budget presentation, and your public hearing presentation is on there as well.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we had a, just for the, the public, to the extent that we had, councils had a workshop on this. We had Chris Prue briefed us on directions and asks as part of this budget, so we've had, we've taken quite a bit of time with this. So, just to share that information for anyone who may be watching at home or in the audience with us this afternoon. Any questions from council? Okay. Now, we, this is all one hearing, all three, including this. So, Pete, would you mind, as we, as we move ahead, would you mind running the presentation from council?
Yes, I'll get that started.
Okay, thank you. Just by way of a background for the public, we had we have a brief presentation on the FY25 municipal budget, and with some PowerPoints, just kind of walk people through some of the factual highlights of the, of the budget, and walking through to how it how it builds towards the, the tax rate that people could expect, the projected tax rate for the year. So, with that, I did share this with councillors earlier to, you know, earlier today for, for suggestions or edits, and heard back from some folks. So, if people are okay with it, I'll just walk people through quickly on it, and if anyone has any highlights or points of emphasis. I tried to keep editor, the editorial pieces out of this to the extent that, you know, we're not all of one mind on this, so I tried to keep it a pretty high level.
Dan, did you say, you sent that out today?
Yeah.
This morning?
This afternoon, I think, is when we were around.
Okay, I just hadn't seen it.
Okay. So, in terms of the, what the FY25 budget does, first of all, we need to thank Cornell, Zach, staff, for all the work, and, and members of the public who come to our workshops and participated in the discussions and followed it. It's a tremendous amount of work to bring this kind of stuff forward, and lots, lots of meetings, and the staff who support our meetings. Thinking about Pete and Mitch and, and others, but just thank you to everybody who, it's, it's a long process and it takes a lot of work, and you know, people who run our state, our town departments, answer our questions, provide additional information as we ask, and it's, it's very, very helpful. So, the budget that is before the council for adoption and is for us, before us for public hearing today is, funds all the filled positions in, that we currently have. It creates a $50,000 central staffing and contracting review resource. The council was not comfortable moving forward with filling some, creating some additional staffing positions or staffing hours. So it does not increase any staffing currently, but we will expect our, our incoming town manager to work with his leadership team to conduct a central staffing and contracting review. The budget sustains all existing municipal services, including some fairly new services like the Mini Grants Program, the Summer Festival, recent rec program expansions that we know are very popular, and it has some, some funding to promote a traffic safety initiative that the council will be discussing over the summer and into the fall. It includes about $285,000 in new capital reserve accounts, which are savings beyond FY25 for future facilities and equipment needs, and potential improvements that could include, include Martin Park, the pool, and our playgrounds. So, it puts us on a footing where we're saving more for the future. So, the next slide, please, Pete? Our FY25 operating expense is up $2.2 million, or about 14.35%, and this, this slide is really the drive, some of the drivers, some of the key drivers of that. Wages and benefits increase almost $600,000 in the upcoming fiscal year. 8.1 million, about $8.1 million of our budget are wages and benefits. That's a little north of 70% of Orno's municipal operating budget, and it's a, the 11.75% year-over-year growth is about three times the rate of inflation. Now, council, you know, proposals have come to council over the course of the year that we have strongly endorsed in terms of, you know, bargaining agreements, and, you know, the existing, you know, cost of living adjustments and contractual obligations we have, and the council's been very supportive of those throughout the year, and this is kind of where it comes, you know, where it comes to, where the bill comes due for those agreements, and, and making sure that we're providing the wages and, and benefits that our, our professional staff would deserve. Our budget's also driven higher by increases in contracts and consultants, and we've up, we're up 58% or about 3.4 million in capital expenses with, the Webster Utility Project is a big, is a big piece of that. Next slide, Pete? So, other than property taxes, Orno raises, is projected to raise just over $12 million in the upcoming fiscal year. So that's, it's a 24% year-over-year increase over what was in the FY24 budget, up $2.3 million in revenue other than property taxes. State revenue sharing is up 1.1 million. It's continues to climb. It's up over 300% over the last five years, and it's now going to be the state revenue sharing that we get from, from the state, just subject to, you know, decisions made in Augusta, is now equates to 33% of Orno's total municipal expense for FY25 versus five years ago, state revenue sharing was just 11 cents on the dollar for our expenses. So we're very we're exposed is not the right word, but we're very, our spending at the local level is very, and, and the commitments we make are very subject to funds that are beyond our control, coming in from, from Augusta in terms of sources. And now in FY25, for the, I think probably for the first time ever, but I didn't, I didn't want to ask Zach to go back and check, but going back at least to 2018, revenue sharing is a greater percentage of our revenue than the property tax would be, going back to at least 2018, and I suspect that, given the disparity between what it was in 2018, the difference between revenue sharing, where it was like a million, little over a million, to what it is now, of, up over 5 million, it's, I suspect that's the first time it's ever been, ever been that way. And capital revenue is up $982,000 as well in, in the budget. This next slide, thank you. Oh, sure.
Yeah, I just, could you go back for a second? Just for the public that's listening, that capital revenue is money that we're taking out of capital reserve account. It's not like we got a grant for 900,000. It's, it's money that's coming out of a reserve account that's built up for capital projects. Thanks.
Thanks, Pete. Next slide. So, as we, as we look to, to build our budget for Orno this year, and you look through the documents, which are, they're all updated today as of the, as of last week's work session, and on the, on the budget webpage and on, at orno.org, there's a $5.5 million, you know, property tax assessment. That's the need to bridge the gap. Property in, in our spending and, and our revenues from other sources. So we'll be looking to the Orno taxpayers for five and a half million dollars for the municipal side of, of Orno's budget, and that's about 31% of our total municipal expenses, and it's going to be 119,000 or 2.2% below what it was in FY24. And this chart here has been prepared by Councillor Marks. I almost, I almost upgraded you to Senator Marks, but yeah, I know, it was that close. Councillor Marks, Councillor Baker worked on this together, and I know, Sarah, if you'd like to kind of talk us through a little bit about what this chart, what you see when you look at this chart?
Yeah, I think the important thing about this chart for me is that as we discuss any specific addition or cut to the budget, I do think it's important for people to have a sense of what specific amounts mean for them. So when we get further on, you're going to see what your actual increase in property taxes this year is going to look like with the proposed overall budget. This chart is really here if we're having a debate this year or next year, or anytime, not just about spending, but also about cutting in the budget and about borrowing. If we're looking at borrowing and taking out bonds, this is what the implication of that is. There's columns for a home value of 100,000, 200,000, or 300,000, so people can get a sense of where their house falls. And I think that's really the gist of what to say about that. This is obviously not an exact figure because there are deductions people get to take, homestead exemption, for example, and other ones, and deductions aren't, exemptions aren't accounted for here, but all the assumptions are listed at the bottom, so anyone who wants to can see what we assumed about a mill rate for this calculation, what we assumed about property values for these calculations, and they're really here just to make the budget process more transparent to the public. When council talks about bonding out a million dollars, what might that mean for you? If council talks about adding $50,000 to the budget, what might that mean for you? That's why it's there.
Yep. Thank you. The next slide, Pete, thank you, is, this is the total municipal revenue based on the property tax assessment. So while the, the municipal side of the property tax assessment is projected to be 5.5 million in the budget we have before us now, the total or property tax assessment will be 14.9 million, and this breaks it down as, as a percentages of, you know, what goes to cover the cost of the schools, what's our contribution to the county, and it breaks it down and it shows trends that have been there. And at this process, the council, the county tells us, you know, what our assessment's going to be. At the municipal level, we decide, you know, we have our workshops and our, and our meetings, and the council votes on, on what that, that piece is going to be, and the schools have a separate process that includes a public vote, an approval of their budget, and, and that vote is tomorrow. Right here in council chambers. We're set up, for those who can't see the back of the room from home, we're set up for that vote tomorrow. Next slide, Pete? Thank you. So, Orno's projected property value, our tax base, is for the upcoming year $624 million. That's a $18 million increase from FY24. Some of that, and I don't have a breakdown for it, some of that is, you know, new valuation, you could, examples of like new valuation, and I hesitate to make any examples because I don't know when it comes on the tax base or not, and, and I'm trying to lock eyes with Mitch in the back of the room, but I won't make any, I won't make any examples, but when, when new things come on, it makes a difference, and sometimes that, that increase in valuation is also homeowners' valuations that are changing based on, you know, where things sit in, in the market, and, you know, changes or additions people make to their homes. That's a 3% increase in Orno's tax base over what was budgeted for in FY24. So it's both the, the tax assessment amount and the valuation amount come together, kind of shape what we pay, what the tax rate's going to be. So if we turn to the next slide, so the, the mill rate, the, the tax rate, projected tax rate for FY25 is going to be $23.94 million with the budget before us, and what's been assessed by the county and what's being considered at the school. That's about a 2.3% rate increase over FY24. We break down how those rates are changing at each of the three, you know, the school, the municipality, and the county, and want to be clear that tax bills vary based on, you know, how the changes in the tax rate from year to year, but also how property valuations change for both the individual and, I guess, across the board. And anything on that?
Yeah, just again, for people listening, the 23.94 per $1,000 is how you would calculate your own actual tax rate based on the value of your house.
Your tax bill?
Yeah, bill. Not right, sorry, bill.
Yep. But again, that's 14, that 23.94 is, if you multiply that by the 624 on the previous page, you'll get the 14.9 million. I checked Zach. You'll get the 14.9 million that, you know, we, we'll assess for property taxes in the upcoming year. And final slide? Next to final slide. We're talked as a council briefly, and we'll be talking more with the incoming town manager about some critical initiatives that we'll need to take on in, in FY25. You know, one of them is going to, we, we have a couple, is it three positions in the fire department that are funded by a grant? Is it two or three? Three? So, as part of our FY25 budget year initiatives, we'll begin working with the fire department, our new town manager, and, and incoming fire chief, to look at the staffing levels and come up with a plan of what we do, what we can do when those positions expire. We've already funded, and it's been discussed already in this presentation, a $50,000 Central Office Staffing and Contracting Review that our town manager, our new town manager will take on with a leadership team. We're going to ask, likely going to ask the new town manager and department leaders to, to look at some of our service agreements and costs, particularly things that haven't been, haven't been put out to bid in one, one way or another, whether it's, you know, legal services and, you know, bank fees and things like that, to see where we come in and if there are opportunities for savings. And finally, we'll be very interested in setting up conversations between the town and the RSU to talk about facilities and other collaborations that we might be able to achieve. So that's something I think we'll do, we'll start in the fall. So that's, that's our presentation. Again, try to keep it at a high level, given the, how little time we had to collaborate on it, and appreciate those who were able to get back to me today. And just again, it's now the public hearing, so is there any, anyone interested in speaking on the budget? Paul, can you join us? Please introduce yourself?
Mr. Chairman, this is just a question for, for clarification. Having come and amused ourselves by listening to most of the budget workshops, there have been conversations gone in every which direction among the council, which is appropriate, about FTE levels and numbers of employees here, there, and everywhere. And I guess I've, I guess I'm not quite sure in detail how some of those conversations worked out. So I guess I've got three positions that I, well, and perhaps anyone else that's listening in on this might like to have some clarification on. Three positions where the town clerk had requested an additional one-half time clerk to assist with activities in the town clerk's office. And Public Works had requested a half-time employee to be charged to Public Works, and that same employee, be a full-time employee, the other half would be charged over to WPCF. In fact, those two positions were, they're, they're not new FTEs, they're positions that were approved for FY24, and council determined not to fund them at that time, and so I guess I'm not quite sure where things ended up on, on those two positions. And then there was a request for, it's kind of a minor one, for eight hours of additional time down at the Orno Public Library. And tell you the truth, as I've looked through the budget materials for tonight, I came away just not clear on, on what has happened to those three positions. And so, anyway, perhaps the council, Mr. Chairman, would enlighten us?
I'm happy, yeah. Typically, at a, you know, public hearing, we don't always respond directly, but it seems like it's pretty straightforward. So, Sarah, do you want to take that, or I could? So, we didn't, we didn't grant those requests in the budget that, based on our discussions last week, we did instead create this $50,000 reserve for a Central Office Staffing and Contracting Review. So when the new town manager comes in, he, he'll be charged with meeting with his leadership team and figuring out, you know, knowing those resources are available, figuring out a, a plan that they can bring back to council in terms of what the, what resources could be needs, need based on those requests, and just on the kind of overall review of what, what staffing levels are like in, in the manager's office, central office. Does anyone else have comments on that?
Just a, maybe a, one point of clarification. That the position, the Public Works position was not approved, it was removed last year. So it wasn't approved last year and just not filled. It was, it was removed, and, and this year it's being proposed a full-time position that starts in December, so it would only be half-time this year, and then it will be full-time next year. And then there's sort of a sidebar agreement with public waste that they, they use an individual. And I think they've still done that throughout this time. So that, that was not an approved position unfilled last year. That was a removed position last year. So just to want to point clarification on that.
Thank you, Councillor Kenny. Councillor Bertholz?
Sure, and I think I just wanted to add one more comment or explanation of the process in case it's helpful to understand like where that came from, and that is that a couple of meetings back, council, all of council weighed in on a sort of level of budgetary growth that we felt we could responsibly pass, and we tasked the council chair and councillor Baker with coming up with some ideas for how we might accomplish that. And so, the sort of not grow, not filling any additional FTEs this year was among their, their list of possible ways to keep us at the, a growth rate that's proportional to inflation, and that's where that came from.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the budget public hearing? Any hands raised online, Pete?
No hands raised online at this time.
Thank you. Alright, we'll close the public hearing on the 2425 Municipal Capital and Water Pollution Control Facilities Budgets. The next public hearing is public hearing I, to accept comments on the proposed FY2025 fee schedule. Do we have any public comment? As part of that hearing? I think I'm doing, oh, I did skip H. I apologize. Let's close, can we just finish I and then?
I'm just gonna let you finish that and then remind you to go back.
Thank, thank you.
Yes, no problem.
Alright. Any public comment on the fee schedule? Alright, and we have any councillor comment on the fee schedules? The eight pages of proposed fees, and most of them are unchanged, but and, so we will have an opportunity, I know I've heard from a resident who's not with us in the public hearing, despite my urging, so we will have an opportunity to visit this as a work session next week, and it'll be part of our final adoption on the 27th. So, is that right? That's how it's sequenced? Okay. Well, that, I will close public hearing, we will close public hearing I, and move back with my apologies to public hearing H, to consider a sewer use fee increase for FY2025. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak on this? Any councillor comment? And again, sharing for anyone who's watching at home that we did spend time on this when we had the WPCF budget work session with Chris, so that was, we got some engagement around that. Okay, with that, I'll close public hearing H. We will close it. Okay, with that, I'll close public hearing H. We will close it, and we will move on to public hearing J, to review the Orno Village Center District Development Program and the implementation of an assessment of zero dollars per thousand of taxable real and personal property for the municipal development district located in the downtown area known as the Village Center Tax, Tax, Tax District from July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Mitch?
So Mitch Stone, I'm the Director of Community Economic Development. Just wanted to quickly tell people what this is, because it could be confusing. The Orno Village Center District Development Program and also Tax, Village Center Tax District was created to help fund the downtown and revitalize the downtown through the Village Association, which is no longer something that is there. The reason that we vote every year to have this be at zero is because it takes an awful lot to make this happen and create the ability to tax that, that district if we wanted to do that again. So by voting zero every year, it allows us the opportunity that if something came up and we wanted to do that, we'd be able to. But staff is recommending a zero tax rate.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Any questions or comments from councillors? Okay, and that we will close public hearing J and move on to public hearing K, to consider amendment to Town of Orno Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-eight, Personnel Article Six, Working Environment, Section twenty-eight ninety-one, Adding Section D, Potential Liability Claims of Harassment or Discrimination. Do we have any public comment on this public hearing? Any councillor comments? Okay, that will close the public hearing on item K. And next, thankfully, moving on from public hearings to acknowledgements by councillors. And I think we start, Rob on your end of the table, this Matt, is okay? We start on Rob's end?
Yeah.
Thanks. We'll start with Rob.
All right, well, we live in a beautiful place, and it's been really wonderful to see all the work that goes into, I guess, enhancing that by all the volunteers in town who are planting flowers and doing all sorts of beautification work around town. That's really lovely to see and helps increase our quality of life here in town. Also want to quickly acknowledge all of the folks who are serving on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which I'm going to plug right now. We're having another meeting on the twelfth, which would be Wednesday at six P M here in these chambers, to continue the work of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. So thank you to everybody who's volunteering on that as well.
Okay, Council Breathall?
Sure. I would like to acknowledge the community members, volunteers, and also members of the public work staff, perhaps especially who did a really ambitious job cleaning up invasive species down in the basin. It's really a transformation, and major kudos to the folks who are out there all day working and the volunteers who joined in the afternoon. Great work.
Council Marks?
I would like to acknowledge Cecilia Cobal Lewis, who is a community volunteer who took the lead on creating the outdoor picnic barbecue event on the first Sunday. I was not in town, but I heard it went really well. I heard Council Breathall flipped a lot of burgers, thanks to staff also in the background who helped that to happen. I wanted to thank Zach Turner, our finance director, who I think has done an amazing job on our budget this year. And, oh, the Orno Historical Society is planning a Webster Side tour this summer. So I'm really excited that they're leading us on a tour. Megan might be able to tell us the dates. I don't have them off the top of my head. Do you have them, Megan? She might find them. But it's really exciting. If you're interested, it was in the Orno Observer, or I'm sure you could call the town office and they could get you those dates. I think it's exciting to have a walking tour of one of our neighborhoods. I hope there'll be more of those coming up.
Okay. Councillor Kenny?
Yes, I would like to acknowledge the Class of twenty twenty-four, Orno Red Riots Graduation. This class has had a huge impact on the community, on the school community. No doubts, they will continue to have a huge impact wherever they all go. And full disclosure, my son was in the class, and I'm extremely proud of him, the last one for us to get through the Arnold School System. So congrats to the Class of twenty twenty-four.
I'll have a graduate next year, so I'm gonna call dibs right now on next year's, you know, next year's. Councillor, Councillor Powers?
Yeah, I'd also like to acknowledge the thrift store for putting up the money to buy a bunch of hot dogs and a bunch of hamburgers for that public-led hotluck that happened a few weeks ago. So thank you to them. And, and also to Cecilia. I appreciate all of her hard work there. And also, I'd like to acknowledge the town staff who will be running an election tomorrow. And that is for the RSU twenty-six budget and also for the primaries. It'll be right here in the, in council chamber. It starts at seven or seven thirty, seven in the morning until eight tomorrow night. All right, thanks.
Great. And I'll go last. I'd like to first thank members of the town staff who contributed to the bike rodeo, the kids' bike rodeo. Not this past Saturday, the Saturday before. It was a, it was really enjoyable to see all the kids riding around with the helmets and it was just a great event to observe, and I know they got a lot out of it. I'd like to thank Pete and the team in the town manager's office for the observer. It's always one of my favorite times of the quarter when the observer comes out. It's a great resource online and, and, you know, in our mailboxes. And I'd like to also thank, acknowledge Sharina Ford, Assistant Clerk in the Clerk's Office, for sharing her concerns and around the Juneteenth holiday and a matter we'll discuss later on. I'm very, whenever someone comes forward to the council, you know, I'd like them to experience an opportunity to be heard. And I wanted to, it can be hard coming forward and speaking to municipal officials, for municipal staff, I think, on items like that. And I appreciate, appreciate the questions and the opportunity to address a concern that a member of the town staff had. So with that, we will close out the acknowledgements by council members.
Dan? Yes. Sorry to interrupt. Is this our last meeting with Cornell, where we're taking votes? Because I would like to acknowledge all the work of Cornell Knight, who's done an fantastic job as our interim town manager. Because Clint's contract starts on the eighth of July, isn't it? Will we have another meeting before then?
We'll have a town council meeting on the eighth. So I think, you know.
Just wanted to make sure that didn't go unnoticed if it was, in fact, the last one.
I was hoping to get through this without anyone knowing that I'm my last, last meeting. But I haven't talked to Clint to see whether he needs me to be in attendance, but he will be in this seat on July eighth. So yes, this is my last.
Yeah, well, thank you, Rob, for that, and thank you, Cornell, very much. It's been, you've been a tremendous help to us and steering us through this, this time of transition. So thank you very much. All right. Item seven, we'll move on to unfinished business. There is none. Item eight, we have the consent agenda, and there's a whole page of consent agenda items. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Well, thank you for that. And we're gonna take one brief pause for a technical question. Thank you. We'll resume our regular broadcast. Under new business, we have Order twenty-four one oh five, an order rejecting the proposals received for the ninety-eight Penobscot Street redevelopment RFP and proceed by exploring housing development options for the property through the comprehensive planning process. And for that, we'll turn to Mitch Stone.
So Mitch Stone, Director of Community Economic Development. So staff, obviously, we got two, two proposals, and they were good proposals. And through the conversations that staff had with the council, it became clearer and clearer what the council maybe was looking for and how that property was not set up for that. And to look at better ways to be able to do that, the direction was to look at not accepting either one of these, but really moving it through the comprehensive plan and looking at the best and highest use as far as housing is concerned on that piece of property. So that's the order before you. That's kind of the history, and I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Okay.
It's, it's subtle, but I feel the, 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 it feels more like we're just not accepting than we are rejecting, but I realize it is the same thing.
Did I actually get a motion on these already?
I don't have anybody know.
Okay, so.
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. So I'll get better at this sometimes. It's a long municipal year. It's the longest municipal year in Orno, so I'll get better at this before we're done. Thank you for that, Mitch, and I agree with Leo. I appreciate people bringing forward some, some concepts. I appreciate how fast the staff was able to put an RFP together and give us something to look at, and it really did help narrow or focus our thinking. And I'm hopeful that these developers have an interest in potentially being a part of what we do moving forward with that, that space and that site. So. Okay, with that, are we ready to vote if there's no more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the order not accepting slash rejecting the proposals, signified by raising your hand, say aye? It's unanimous. And next item on the agenda is Order twenty-four one oh six, an order accepting the bid received from Stephen Rowley of Ellsworth, Maine, to purchase the town of Orno's interest and property located at Three Water Street for forty-five thousand and ten dollars. And further authorizing the town manager to execute all documents necessary to effect this transfer and release the town's interest in said property. Help me out by motioning.
I'll second, but also note, I think you misspoke, tiny misspeak, this says forty-five thousand and ten dollars.
Oh, did I say forty-five hundred?
I think you said forty-three thousand.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So forty-five thousand and ten dollars.
Thank you.
Yep, and I will second that.
Okay.
Just so a little history, you apparently put this out to bid last fall before I even arrived, and you put a minimum bid of ten thousand and didn't get any bids. We did get some interest in people wanting to just show up and buy it. So we put it back out for bid, put a minimum of seventy-five hundred, and you see the pricing that you've got, which is very good.
Yeah, that was an impressive second round of putting this out, I would say. And we were pretty fortunate with that. And it's historically always just been highest bidder is where we've gone. So it seems like I'm glad we put it back out.
Okay, all those in favor of Order twenty-four one oh six? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, Order twenty-four one oh seven. So should we do the, put it on the table first and then talk about an amendment? Okay. We get a motion to consider Order twenty-four one oh seven?
So moved.
Second.
Second, ordered and seconded. So as I mentioned in the acknowledgements, we heard from Sharina Ford in the, in the Clerk's Office through, I think it was forwarded up through Cornell, that Orno was not going to observe Juneteenth as a paid holiday as with, you know, the town office being closed. And Sharina sent, shared with us a lot of information. It's an item we missed, frankly, to be accountable for. We talked about it last year when council was passed the Juneteenth proclamation in, I think, May of twenty twenty-three. And through our, I suppose, through our transition, we agreed to, we went back and looked at it and thanked Cornell's office and Amanda for going back and finding the references in our, in our minutes. We agreed to take it up at a later meeting. That later meeting didn't happen in time for us to go through the process and add Juneteenth to Orno's list of holidays under an ordinance. Sharina brought it forward. And I asked Cornell to add this as an order ahead of our, we have a deadline of twelve P M on Thursdays to get things, orders added to our agenda. And I asked Cornell to add it so we could have this discussion. I would share that we, we talked with two of our town attorneys and have a consensus that we have. There's, there's nothing prohibiting us from acting as an order. I would, as you'll see, I think later in the agenda, under future agenda items, we will discuss and set a date to begin addressing the potential ordinance amendment for the town ordinances to add Juneteenth as a permanent holiday. So that's a, that we'll work through that process as well, assuming council is interested in that. But wanted to bring it forward to the council to discuss that we'd had. This brought to our attention, we failed to act on it as a council in, in time to make an ordinance change. But for me, we ask staff to jump when people come forward on things that, you know, are community priorities. We did it with the, you know, the busing situation and how responsive the police department has been with that. We've done it with the Arts of Palooza and the Arts Festival that we're gonna have this summer. And I think it needs to be, when we hear from staff, that there's something that needs to be addressed. I think we need to act quickly on that as well. Just to be true to the values we want to have as a council. So that's why, that's why it's on the agenda. And I'm certainly open to, open to questions or comments before I'll offer an amendment as well.
So we had a email come in at four fifty-one from an attorney, maybe Cornell, and probably people haven't even read it. But there was, could you maybe expand on Cornell? Where they say, wait, are we talking, what are we talking about right now? Are we talking, do I have to wait? You're gonna make an amendment to do this immediately or no? Just because that's, that's.
If you'd rather just put the amendment on the table, that way it's clear to everybody.
Okay, if that's what you.
So I would like to offer an amendment to Order twenty-four one oh seven. So it reads, order authorizing the town manager to grant municipal employees a one-time paid holiday on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, in observance of Juneteenth. Could I get a?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And this is not, just for, you know, to the, to the extent that in terms of mechanics, you know, every, every council, we're meeting at five o'clock today because of an order we passed in consent agenda, changing our, by ordinance, council meetings start at seven P M. We never meet at seven P M because we have an order before us at every council meeting like we did today, changing the next council meeting start time to seven. So this is, this would be another example of something that's not in the ordinance, but council acting as an order for this one-time thing. And then we'd move to a, later in the meeting, we'll set a time to start the conversation. So Leo, thank you for your patience, and I'd welcome your comments.
Thanks. So there, there's an email that, that came at four fifty-one from an attorney who I'm not sure, Bill is his name. And he says it only requires one time, explained that only require one time. Order relating to pay for one-time holidays should only require payment for non-union employees and exclude employees covered by a union contract. Can you explain that or talk further about that?
Just that that's a negotiated benefit, and in their contract, it lists the holidays, and Juneteenth is not listed.
Right, okay. So that, I guess that, that solidifies the point that was made. Dan had shared the meeting, the only time we've discussed this publicly, and we heard from our town manager at the time that there would be bargaining units involved in that discussion, and this is considered an employee benefit. And this obviously pulls this directly out of any negotiations. Meanwhile, we have a union that's forming, that's being negotiated. So I think this, for me, it circumvents the entire process. And that, that response from the attorney verif, you know, basically, I think, solidifies the fact that this is an employee benefit. And employee benefits are discussed in contracts and negotiated in contracts. And this order circumvents that. So the process for me is, is pretty flawed. And I'm making no judgment on whether or not that's a, that is a a holiday that we should be adding or not. But for me, this process was, was pretty greatly flawed, taking it out of negotiations.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other comments?
I guess I'm still just wanting to understand from Cornell. So is the legal advice that we cannot give? is the legal advice that we cannot give this holiday to union employees, even if we want to? Is that what you're telling us?
That's his recommendation. That you're not. I don't think it means that you can offer it, which Zach has determined would be about fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars for public safety overtime.
And I guess I, one more comment is the fact that we are relying on and looking at emails at four fifty-one before coming into this meeting, and this is no judgment on Cornell's, our response time, it it spurred up on Thursday, I think, and and so to suggest this is a rushed decision is is not really a stretch. Um, and usually when things are done in a rushed fashion, it's not good practice. And and it's, you know, we some, I understand that you won't, you're talking about overtime, fourteen thousand, but if you do the, I guess, daily pay, it comes out closer to thirty-five thousand, that no employee, I mean, that's the day, that's the daily rate approximately based on our payrolls, about thirty-five. So this is a cost, and that that is why it happens in a contract negotiation and not at the whim of a council, in my opinion.
Well, it doesn't, sorry, Son, you had your finger on the button first.
Sure, um. So I agree that the best way to come up with a set of um holidays that are the approved holidays is to to do that in negotiations with bargaining units in the long term, but this is a bit of a special one-time circumstance, and I also think that um, given that this is a federal and state holiday, and I expect many members of the public would expect town offices to be closed. I don't think that it is outside the bounds of reasonable for council to be more generous with holidays. I would feel very differently if we were taking a holiday away. Um, but granting an additional holiday, um, I think does not in my mind, it would not impinge on staff in a similar way, and I'd welcome um perspectives from staff if anyone disagrees with me, but that's my thinking.
And I mean, I guess I I sympathize with you, Leo, about process here, and yeah, I mean, I do think there's room outside of negotiations for this to happen, and in fact, we we do in fact have as part of our purview to be able to set other holidays for the town, which is why we were discussing this, I think, sometime last year. Um, and opted to, I guess, uh, kick the can down the road about it a bit, and I'm glad that we're gonna have the discussion again uh when we get to this future agenda items, items of concern, and set a a time perhaps for us to discuss whether or not we want to have this as a holiday going forward and match up with the state and the federal holiday which already exists. Um, I think I am in favor of, this is a a one-time thing. I I'm I seem to recall, though, the number being lower than what you suggest, Leo. Um, from what Sophia told us last year, I I seem to recall she was saying something like not including overtime, I think it cost us ten thousand for a day uh if we were to for a holiday, but I might be wrong about that, so I'm I'm very happy to be corrected. So, I mean, that assuages some of my concerns, but it also, well, I'll just leave it there.
Again, using just simple math, um, based on our salary and benefits coming in at about nine, nine million. When you, when you back that out by fifty-two weeks and back that out by five days, it comes to thirty-four thousand. That that's what a day, that's what it cost us a day, so I don't I guess you can I don't know how else you can look at that, but um
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I haven't done any of the math myself on that. I just recall Sophie saying something to that effect.
Well, and I I think that's another point, that, you know, this, the request was made that Dan shared the email with us, and all, and it said in it, and I've also asked what the financial impact was. The order was written, was put on an agenda with with no financial note. It's, I don't think that's the way we should be doing things.
I think that's a fair point, if we don't know how much it costs. I mean, I I think at a minimum, I I do want us to have the discussion um going forward about whether or not we want this to be a a permanent holiday for the town. But uh I I guess I'm I'm open to being flipped on this in other direction. Right now, I lean in favor of this, but I I think what you're raising is a really reasonable concern.
And I think before, I think the first discussion is whether this should be part of a contract negotiation or not, for me, le- less about do we, do we pursue this as at an added an added uh holiday. Right, again, we were, the last advice we were given by the last town manager was this is a, this is a benefit, and it's a negotiated item, so we would have to make the decision to pull it away from that. And as far as expectations, I think I read that this, did this come on board in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two at a federal level? Is that, I think, what was shared with us from the employee, maybe? Does anyone, anyone read that? What's that? So nobody knows when this started.
Feel free to pull up the reference if you want to.
Does any, does anyone else know when this became a holiday?
Man, I don't think it's gonna be changing anytime soon.
I I'm just curious if we know how long, because if if it had been a long-term one, it probably would have been done perhaps, but I mean, I think this is relatively new, so. But no one, no one else is aware of that.
June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
That wasn't the material, I think, right? Thanks.
Councilor Marx?
Um, yes, um, thanks, Leo. I I do understand the concerns. I think that um, you know, we dropped the ball as a council, like, we said it was gonna come back for a discussion again after our last discussion, and we never got it on an agenda, so I guess I first and foremost want to say thank you to staff for bringing that to our attention, that we dropped that. And um you know, a year ago, um, I brought up the fact that we have a Juneteenth proclamation that I felt like we weren't living into. Um, because we had a meeting scheduled on Juneteenth was my first thing. I didn't even know at that point if our staff got the day off or not. I was a fairly new counselor, but I really do believe deeply that when we make proclamations and we put these big words out there, we have a moral obligation to live into those things we proclaim, so I, for me, I understand that there's a longer discussion and a longer process we need to have about making it a permanent holiday. But on a short term, I would be in favor of creating this as a holiday for this year and to live into the proclamation we've made and not say one thing and do another. Um, that's where I stand. Thank you. I might off that entire time. I don't know.
I heard it, and you know, as living into our proclamation and our and our values and um, Council Powers, do you have anything on it?
I'd just say, as a one, one-time um holiday, I am in favor it, favor of of going forward with this, but in terms of future, I I agree with um Leo that we need to discuss what what we need to do about negotiations with the unions in the future, and that this should only be a one time, and that we should bring it up quickly next fall and not wait until the last minute.
I would, I agree, and I I definitely agree with the process piece as well, um, in terms of it being short and quick. I would say that um, I did talk with Councilor Baker about this. And and he told me it was okay uh to share that he supported moving ahead with the order as well um in his absence, and that was contingent, uh implied contingent on what we heard from the attorneys, and again, we've had both, both town attorneys have told us um that this is something we can do if we we choose to. I would want to work with um Cornell in terms of the the feedback from Philip Sossier at Bernstein Sure. I would like to understand. It's not my intention for this. I don't think it's anyone's intention for any of our employees to get a day off the, without pay. So the expectation would be that all Orno employees would get paid just like they came to work on June nineteenth. And then it feels like we may have something to discuss around overtime with employees who are represented by a union, is that, and have to come to work because of a public safety need. Is that your understanding?
Yes, so if it's treated like any other holiday, they would get holiday pay, and that would be the how to, additional funding that is not in the budget, the fourteen to fifteen thousand.
Okay. All right.
I would just, I guess, we're we've run over, and I don't know, um I think in in different departments, we've definitely run over budget this year, and this is obviously in this year's budget, correct? June.
Yeah, it's in the FY twenty-four budget.
Yeah. So regardless of the cost um that we didn't know coming into this, um and the fact that we're, we've run over in several lines, everyone's thumbs up on, that's okay, and we can be, to uh Sonia's report about being generous, it it is being generous, it's being generous with taxpayer money, that that's where we sit. Um, so we're not being generous. The taxpayer, we're being generous with taxpayer money. But no one has any concerns about any other budget line overruns or anything like that. I just want to be, make sure.
Uh, Leo, I guess I would say, Cornell, I'm gonna ask you, are you concerned about having the money to cover this? Because as long as you have a idea of where it can come from in the budget, I'm fine.
Well, it should come from the salary lines, um so it'll be an overdraft in the more of an overdraft in fire. I don't know about police overdraft. Would uh overdraft that salary line and the town manager's line. I don't know how close off the top of my head how the other uh departments are. I would imagine highway is okay, but they're they're not gonna get overtime because they're just gonna be closed. But they had less um wage uh costs due to the lighter snow season. So I think it's mostly just uh public safety and the town manager.
Thank you. I still think it's a really important holiday and important to support um what we've said about inclusion, diversity, and our Juneteenth proclamation. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, is there any more discussion? We have before us the amendment. Mitch Stone's coming up to share something.
Mitch Stone, Director of Community Economic Development. Um, I don't want to cloud this issue. This is not about that. Uh, one of the things that we're gonna need some guidance on is that we have a planning board meeting scheduled for that night that has already been public, publicly noticed with people coming and doing that. So trying to figure out how to manage that. I I don't, I don't, if you make this a holiday, how to, I don't know the best way to do that, because I think it does present some issues. But that's an issue thing. We can work through that, but I just, we're gonna have to think about that, that's all.
Cornell?
I would suggest you allow the planning board to have their meeting since it's been advertised, and any staff that works would get a
Time and a half?
That they get a holiday comp time.
Okay.
Take it at a later date.
That seemed to work, Mitch?
Can we also make sure that Juneteenth gets on the planning calendar, because that was the one thing we did agree on as a council um last May? Was that Juneteenth should be a holiday on the planning calendar for staff, although we've hunted the official holiday, the decision that it should be flagged on the calendar did get made last year, so can we be sure that it makes it onto the calendar, Cornell? I I don't know what planning calendars we keep, but regardless of whether, what happens with the further discussions about making it a permanent holiday, which I hope we will do, regardless of that, can we at least get it on a planning calendar so we don't schedule meetings on that date? Thank you.
Okay, so um, if there is no further discussion, we have an amendment before us. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amendment? I think we may need to vote, do a let's, why don't we do a roll call vote? Um, we'll start with Councilor Powers.
In favor.
Councilor Kenny?
Not in favor.
Councilor Demerit is in favor. Councilor Marx?
In favor.
Councilor Berthel?
In favor.
Councilor Larway?
In favor.
And that passes uh five to one with one counselor absent. And now um, there's no further discussion. We have the underlying order. So we'll do a roll call vote for that as well. Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Kenny?
Not in favor.
Councilor Demerit is in favor. Councilor Marx?
In favor.
Councilor Berthel?
In favor.
Councilor Larway?
In favor.
Okay, so that uh that passes, so the town of, for twenty twenty-four, the town of Orno will recognize June nineteenth as a paid holiday in recognition or observance of Juneteenth. And thank you for, to staff and counselors and the attorneys for um the fast work and attention on this. We appreciate it. Good. Next up on our agenda is future agenda items, items of concern. Item ten. The first item I asked um Cornell and Shelley to add this to our agenda is to discuss setting a date to address a potential ordinance amendment to the town of Orno ordinances. Chapter twenty-eight personnel, section twenty-eight eighty-two holidays having to do with Juneteenth. So looking at our schedule, um, I would like to add this to a Finance and Operations Committee meeting, or I guess we could if people have a preference to do this through Finance and Operations as opposed to some other committee or Finance and Operations? Okay, I would like to um propose that we add it to um is our July fifteenth meeting, council committee meeting? Appropriate for that, to start that discussion? And we'll have to do all the things, you know, in terms of public hearing notices, call a public hearing and and those kinds of things after our discussion. Does that work?
Dan, if you want the ordinance number, is that on there? Our current ordinance is section twenty-eight eighty-two for holidays.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else have anything else for future agenda items or items of concern?
Could we add um a, I don't know if we, I think we've talked a little bit about this, and maybe we're gonna do it more holistically, I'm not sure, but um roles and responsibility um of council. Can we at least add a little placeholder to have a discussion uh about that?
Sure, it feels like something we could do with our policy and
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we do that? Can we cycle back to our policy and procedures manual that we were nearly done with and approved, which addresses that in a lot of detail? Would that be an appropriate way to do it, Leo?
Sounds good.
I would love to get that back, so.
Thanks.
Once Clint Clint is with us too, it'll be, we'll have you know, work that we'll do on the, we formed a special committee that uh Council Marx is chairing on the nominations, evaluations, nominations and procedures. So that, I feels like that would be a good spot for that. And let's plan on doing that at our wrong month. I think just as well, we could start that conversation at our July fifteenth meeting. Do we need a work plan for that committee in addition to, and you know, it makes sense for us to have the person who's gonna be in the seat starting July eighth? Part of that conversation, so we'll do both those things on July fifteenth. Right, apologize. Flip back and forth to a lot of different things. Now, the next up is the town manager's report. Unless, there's no other items for future agenda items or items of concern, right? Town manager's report?
Okay, brief update on the pool. What else about the pool? Contractors finishing demo tomorrow, and uh he is on, they are on target with their timeline. They next install a felt layer, and then the liner is glued to the felt. But it must be sunny. And they can't put glue down in the rain. That's why there's no specific date of when it's going to open, because it is weather dependent. Uh, so once the liner is fastened to the gutter, they'll be done, pool will be grounded, and then filled, Public Works will pour concrete around the sides, uh chemicals added, and then ready to go.
So let's do we want to vote on a sunny day for, no? Put that on the agenda. Thank you for that, and Megan, thank you very much for, I mean, you've taken on a facilities role here with this. That's greatly appreciated. Um, and I know all of Orno will be appreciative of your work this summer. Uh, next up is oh, and we got something else on the pool?
Yeah, just on the pool, a big thank you to Cornell and Megan and staff also on the Yeah, just on the pool. A big thank you to Cornell and Megan and staff, also on the lifeguard staffing. Because that was an impressive effort. I don't know over what time period, but sounded like a lot of work to pivot and get that all in place or partway. I mean, toward in place. I'm very impressed and just thank you, big acknowledgement for the community who doesn't know. Staff has really had to handle a curve ball there and they've done it really well.
If there's nothing else on the town manager's report, public petitions? We have no public petitions. Final chance for public comment? If there are no hands raised online and there are no audience members rushing to the podium. We're going to now, we, we don't anticipate having anything after executive session, right? Okay. Okay. So I'll take a motion for the council to move into executive session pursuant to thirty six M R S I, section eight four one. To consider a request for poverty tax abatement based on poverty and disability, number two zero two four dash zero zero one. And we will be back after our executive session to conduct public business.
I would like to move approval.
Second?
All in favor? Is it unanimous? Okay, we'll be back shortly. Nice job. Thank you for bringing that.
Yes.
Okay, Pete, are we broadcasting again?
Yes, we're back.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Um, I would accept a motion to come out of executive session, uh, at, under agenda item fourteen.
So moved. Second?
All in favor? The Orenno Town Council is out of executive session and I would entertain a motion on order twenty-four one oh eight, in order to consider a request for poverty tax abatement based on poverty and or disability, number two zero two four dash zero zero one. And we will be back after our executive session to conduct public business.
I would like to move approval.
Second?
All in favor? Is it unanimous? Okay, we'll be back shortly. Okay, Pete, are we broadcasting again?
Yes, we're back.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Um, I would accept a motion to come out of executive session, uh, at, under agenda item fourteen.
So moved. Second?
All in favor? The Orenno Town Council is out of executive session and I would entertain a motion on order twenty-four one oh eight, in order to consider a request for poverty tax abatement based on poverty and or disability, number two zero two four dash zero zero one.
So moved. Second?
Strong support for that. All in favor? Passage unanimously. Thank you, Shelley, for bringing that forward to us. And thank you for joining us this evening. Good. Item fifteen on our agenda is to move back into executive session again, pursuant to one M R S A, section four oh five six E for consultation with the town attorney regarding ongoing litigation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous and we will not, we will only be adjourning when we come back from this. Is that correct, Cornell? So there'll be no more, we will not be broadcasting anymore, um, as we shut off right now. So thank you, Orenno, for tuning in.